Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make the decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Ruck.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any moment of silence? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for John A. Nappi, husband of the late Cecilia Nappi, to whom he was married to for over thirty years. Prior to his retirement, he was employed as a mechanical and software engineer for Raytheon's, DeVox, and Applikon for many years. John was a member of the Member of Mac River Flood Commission. John was also a member of the PCC, Pottegadville Citizens Council, and very active with voicing his opinion concerning ANL and the flooding issues. John was very well respected. He is survived by his longtime companion of twenty-two years, Marjorie Ann Kelly of Tingsborough, his two sons, John Nappi Jr. and Stephen Nappi, his six grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. He will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Donna A. Valencourt. She received her education in the Lowell School System and was a graduate of Lowell High School. Donna began her career with the City of Lowell Public Works Department and retired as an administrative assistant. She was the head billing clerk for the water sewer department. She had served the City of Lowell for thirty-seven years. Donna is survived by her two nephews, David and Edward Valencourt, her two dear friends, Joanne Getchea of Florida and John Cornelius. Special thanks to Angela Getchea for the care, love, and support she provided to Donna over the years. We offer our condolences to her family. I'd like to offer also a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for a man described as a loving husband, father, grandfather, brother, and friend. Most of us come under the last category, a friend, and that is who William Stephen Panagiotakis was to many. Willie, as those who knew him called him, lived his first eight years in a tenement on Adam Street and attended Lowell Public Schools. He then moved to Drakeett, graduating from Drakeett High School, class of nineteen fifty-one. After graduation, he enlisted in the United States Navy and was assigned to the USS Strong, where he sailed the world and saw combat during the Korean War. He would suffer a disability from his service that grew worse through the years. He was also proud of his service and the men that he served with. On his return to civilian life, he attended East Coast Aerotech and upon successful completion was hired by Transworld Airlines, TWA, as an airplane mechanic. He worked for TWA for the next forty-three years, and at Logan International Airport, he worked side by side with my brother-in-law, James Warren, and that is how I come to know Willie and Edna. He also spent five years during that time working in Saudi Arabia under a TWA contract with Saudi Airlines so that he could better provide for his family, especially for their education costs. In nineteen seventy-eight, Willie was named TWA Employee of the Year and was to be feted in Paris, France. He promised his daughter Sophia that he was going with, that he was going, she was going with him to see Paris. However, as Greek luck would have it, the snow that was brewing became the Blizzard of seventy-eight. Through many challenges, delays, and obstacles, and with Willie's determination and the will to keep his promise, Willie and Sophia finally made their journey complete. The unstoppable snowbirds from Lowell made it there safely. Willie was a member of the William Sewell Gardner Kill winning Masonic Lodge for over fifty years in the Scottish Rite. He was also a member of the Greek American Legion and the International Association of Machinas. He is survived by his wife, Edna Barrett Panagiotakis, and their four children, former state senator Steve C. Panagiotakis and his wife Christine Sophia Agoyan and her husband, John, Athena Panagiotakis and her husband, Christus Panagiotopoulos, and Lieutenant Christopher Panagiotakis and his fiancee, Kelly Enright. His seven grandchildren, Jonathan and Christopher Agoyan, Gianna and Alexandria Panagiotakis, Christopher and Stephen Panagiotopoulos, Christian Enright. His four great-grandchildren, Georges Sophia and Amelia Panagiotopoulos and Violet Enright, and his canine companion, Sammy. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. He will be truly missed, but let us not forget to do a moment of silence to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I'd like to do a moment of silence for Mr. James L. Cooney Jr. James L. Cooney Jr. passed away on February twentieth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. He led a full life of family and friendships and fun. Last week, Jim and his wife Susan celebrated fifty-three years of marriage, during which they raised their four daughters, Caroline, Beth, Megan, and Mara. Jim was said to have hit the jackpot when he met his wife Susan, and his longevity after his diagnosis was thanks to her care and devotion. Jim was born in Lowell, Massachusetts, April seventh, nineteen forty-five, and he was a proud and distinguished of his alumni at the Immaculate Church, Immaculate Conception School, and Keith Academy. He remained in Lowell for the majority of his life, and Lowell is where he grew the business his father began in nineteen forty-six. Jim led the James L. Cooney Insurance and Real Estate Agency as president until twenty-fifteen. Jim will be sadly missed. He was a great businessman. He was very firm. He was very stern, but he's also very generous. He'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Counselor Getchea?
I'd like to offer a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine also.
Counselor Yem?
I second that, Counselor Getchea. I watched what happened in Ukraine that hit home really hard because forty-seven years ago, the Khmer Rouge marched into the capital of Cambodia, Phnom Penh, and that's the beginning of the killing field of Cambodia. So I would like to also remember and offer a prayer for the people of Ukraine. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. Two, Mayor's Business, two point one, communication remote Zoom participation, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Getchea. Motion is approved. Two point two, communication regarding Lowell Memorial Auditorium, one hundredth anniversary. Mr. Clerk, do you have a speaker here?
It's from the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. I don't know if there's anyone here, but we left a communication on the desk.
I want to congratulate Lowell Memorial Auditorium then on their one-hundredth anniversary. It's a great facility, bring a lot of events to the great city of Lowell. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. Motion is approved. Three, City Clerk, three point one, minutes of City Council Executive Session, February eighth, City Council Regular Meeting, February fifteenth, Auditor Clerk Oversight and Personnel Subcommittee, February twenty-second, Youth Services Subcommittee, February twenty-fourth, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Janess. Motion is approved. Mr. Mayor? Counselor Janess?
Yes, just a quick question for Mr. Clerk. I received a couple inquiries from folks looking for the minutes from the executive session that were not in the packet. I'm not sure what the normal process is or posted those.
Counsel, I didn't include them in the package because they were, once they're approved, they're public. Now that they're approved, they're public, they'll be on, they'll be available in my office for the public.
Okay, that's what I figured. Thank you.
Yeah, I could, I have to get them approved.
Yep, that's what I.
They're available to the public.
Yep, that's what I figured. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that the motion is approved already, right? Okay. Four, general public hearings, four point one, law and order, historic preservation. Over the seven? Okay. All right, the seven o'clock. The four point two as well?
Yeah.
Okay, we will skip the section four and five to six, communication from City Manager, six point one, motion responses. We have motion response from A through P. When I read the motion response, if you have comments on it, please raise your hand. If not, I will just continue to the next one. A, motion response, city facility mask policy. Any comment? B, motion response, equity and inclusion stabilization fund. Any comment? Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the City Manager. Thank you for this report. In looking at this report, which summarizes the amount of funds that have been raised into the city's Equity and Inclusion Fund since it has been set up, just to be direct, it's a relatively small number, nine hundred and forty-six dollars raised primarily, if not exclusively, through voluntary donations that residents were able to make along with their property tax bills. And I don't want to at all overlook the generous residents that did take the time and contribute their own personal funds to this important, important fund. But I do wonder, as I look at the report, about whether the best way for the city to contribute to the cause of equity and inclusion is through raising funds, administering a fund, and dispersing those funds to specific causes. I think this was a well-intentioned motion to establish the fund when it came up. At the time, several other cities were establishing similar funds, as were private organizations. I think ours followed the city of Boston's. However, since that time, the city of Boston, realizing that they could not keep up with the fundraising of other, you know, private and charitable organizations, closed their fund and donated the balance to a separate Equity and Inclusion Fund. You know, here in the city of Lowell, to name one, the Greater Lowell Community Foundation has done excellent job of fundraising and dispersing those funds, including some that, you know, assisted this, the council in being able to fund the HR audit that took place. And I just wonder if, you know, we should reevaluate, you know, whether this is our best contribution to equity and inclusion, and, you know, whether it's possible to raise sufficient funds. I believe when we set this up, there was an issue of ethically whether we could publicly solicit donations and whether donors could actually be listed publicly, which I think makes it much more difficult to raise funds than a private organization could. So, you know, I don't want to suggest anything through a motion. I'm kind of inviting more feedback, both from the council and from the community, whether it makes sense to continue and, you know, try to figure out ways to raise more money into the fund, figure out how we're going to administer and disperse it, or whether it might make sense to leave this sort of endeavor to private organizations like the Greater Lowell Community Foundation to do. So, you know, like I, like I said, I, this is, it's difficult work where, you know, cities aren't necessarily set up to do this sort of thing. So I want to put that question out there, you know, without taking any, necessarily any action on it, to invite, you know, opinions from the council and the, in the community and see what the best way forward here is. Thank you.
Does anybody want to make comment? Have none, going down to C, motion response, ARPA parks improvements and business assistance. Any comment?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you. I'm very happy to see that we, tonight, after this motion response, we have set up a framework for ARPA where we should be dispersed some of those money to. And my understanding is that it's just framework. I know that we set up fifteen point five million dollars for park and stadium improvement. Park meaning park throughout the city. Stadium improvement, my understanding is Colley Stadium. We, we get every report from the, the repair improvement of that Colley Stadium would cost roughly nine million dollars. So the five million dollars certainly are going to a good use for that stadium because it's really is, it's area, it's area where we showcase our, our city in terms of the high school and, and kid who play either be soccers or football. I'm happy to see that. However, the rest should be, we should have a somewhat, you know, host a public meeting to get input from the resident, either be Centerville, Acres, South Lowell, since all this, all the neighborhood, so that to see the remainder of the money be dispersed accordingly. So I'm, so I'm looking forward to this public input of, that we will set in the very near future. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know we will have a broader discussion on the, the ARPA spending plan later on down the agenda, but given that a couple of the topics that are covered in this motion response have jumped onto the, the front pages, I did just want to speak to, to a couple of these issues. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I sat here and made the argument that, that, one, through this motion, that the city should, you know, make a specific allocation of the ARPA funding to open space and parks, which is, which is included here in addressing this response. But I also had made the argument that the wisest way to allocate this ARPA funding was through needed capital projects that would otherwise have to be bonded in order to save taxpayer money on the debt service. That would otherwise happen through, through the bonding of those projects. So the, the two parks and open space projects that are specifically spelled out in here, the Colley Stadium project and the Shed Park project, you know, have a significant price tag. I think, you know, maybe have caused some, some sticker shock based on the, the cost. I think we were recently updated on the, the needed repairs at, at Colley to move forward with other things, so we had an idea of that. But, you know, they are substantial investments, but they are consistent with what I was hoping to see this ARPA money used for, which was capital investments using the cash from the ARPA allotment to save on, on debt service. So through you, Mr. Mayor, there, you know, there isn't a lot of specific information on, on these projects included in the report. I'm wondering through you to Madam Manager, if we can just get a little bit more information on the, the scope of the, the Colley Stadium and the Shed Park Pavilion projects, just to get a little bit more detail on, on what those investments would include in those areas?
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. So the informational, that's further on, the, the motion response addresses a couple of motions, but the informational that's on the agenda further on is essentially a starting point. It's a proposal. It's a framework. It's not an etched in stone, but it's intended to, and I want to credit Connor Baldwin and his team and department heads that have worked very hard on trying to get this something before the council for, for several months, taking input and so forth. But by no means is this, you know, definitive, etched in stone. It's, it's really almost like a smorgasbord because that's what the ARPA eligibility categories entail, so many categories. And so, including parks and open space, but not limited to parks and open space. And so, you know, I think as we've talked about many times, you know, the monies that the city of Lowell is getting, we could use multiple of that, you know. We could use five hundred million to satisfy, you know, all of the needs across the city. And of course, we don't have that. So with regard to, we're happy to bring back, and if the council wants to do this at Subcommittee or however you want more detail and more input. But again, it's a framework and it's a starting point. You know, we had the Colley assessment that we brought to the council, I think, in January. I'm not sure of the exact date, but that showed, I thought it was somewhere around ten or eleven million dollars of needed repairs to the, to the grandstand area. And there was also a motion a few weeks ago asking that we reach out to the school department to see if they will engage in discussion around perhaps funding some of that with ESER money that they have available. And so what you see in the proposal, we can give you that detail as, as, because Gail did an assessment of what the needs were out there. But we, this was a, what you see in the proposal is about half of that, and the suggestion is, we've been trying to set up that meeting with the superintendent, that if the city puts up half the money, will the school department put up half the money? And that's a conversation that will have to be had. So again, this is, I want to be clear because this is a proposal and it's not something that is absolute, every single item has to be adhered to or will be. It's, it's really going to be a work in progress for the council going forward, for the next administration. You know, I think we laid out the timelines that we're dealing with, which are going to be important to be mindful of because though it sounds like a long time, you have to commit the funds by the end of twenty-four and then complete the projects by the end of twenty-six. And so though that sounds like a long time, to actually get projects approved, designed, bid, completed, two and three years goes by real fast. And so the idea was to try and get this ball rolling with this proposal, this framework that was put together. And again, it wasn't taken out of thin air. It was taken through input that's happened at subcommittees with the prior council, input online, Civics Plus, surveys, and so forth. So just to, to give, give some context for the council. As far as the Shed Park, we can get more information, as I said, if the council wants it as a follow-up report or at a Subcommittee, whatever the council prefers. The Shed Park is not for park improvement as much as it is repair to the pavilion at Shed Park, which is in very poor shape. It's, it had been a capital project, my understanding, requested, even going back to the time when Tom Bellegarde was, was here to fix this pavilion, and it hasn't been done. So the idea there was, you know, it would be too bad to have to board it up or close it off because it's widely used. But it, it isn't for the parks itself, but that, that pavilion. But we can get more detail as far as, there wasn't the assessment done of the Shed Park yet. There was an assessment done, but not as detailed as the Gail assessment for, for Colley. And so those things have to be done. If the council decides we want to move forward with this or that, then the process will be, you'll have to do the assessment, you'll have to get the detail, you have to obviously design the project, bid the project, all of which is pretty time-consuming. So, you know, we're happy to give you all the information in further detail as requested.
Thank you. And in terms of the information, you know, I know in the response it mentions that part of the reasoning for including the Shed Park Pavilion project was because of how widely it's used by residents throughout the city for event, you know, the use of the pavilion is permitted, people pull permits for, you know, birthday parties and other events, things like that. Is there data that exists or can it be quantified? I mean, do we know where people are coming from, how many neighborhoods they're, they're coming from based on, you know, who's requesting a permit?
Yeah, yeah, we, so, so permits are requested both for organizations and for individuals, families, and so forth, and we have that by, across the city where they live, and, and the majority are not from Belvedere, the majority are from all across the city. And, and we looked at that as far as just the pavilion because that's all this has to do with is, it's really almost like a function space that, that people use, even like teams or, you know, they may have a barbecue and there's just, it's really utilized quite a lot. And so I know Connor and, and the team looked at it to determine, is it eligible? Because you have to consider eligible and, and it does serve the broader population and it is, buts to qualified census tracts. So those are all the, every single item in the proposal, you know, it was necessary for staff to go through, not just to put them on the list, but to make sure, will they qualify? Because the last thing you want to do is find out down the road that something that you allotted money for, when the Treasury comes in and the feds come in and audit what the expenditures were, and it's very strict what they're doing, you don't want to be in a position to have the city be told, you shouldn't have spent it on that, you need to pay us back. So we're trying to be as thorough on the front end to make sure anything that's on that list is positively allowed under Treasury regulations, to the point that the research that Connor and his to the point that the research that Connor and his team have done, even working with our outside auditors, just to be sure that whatever we're putting forward, and I'm sure it will be true for the next administration, you can rest assured, you know, you're not going to find out a year or two years or three years down the road, oh, you shouldn't have spent it on that. You know, those are, that's one of the challenges with these new federal funds because, let's face it, we haven't had ARPA funds before. So everybody wants to proceed with caution.
Thank you. Just very briefly, if there is information on the, you know, where, who's using the pavilion and if we have addresses, is that information that can be provided to the council?
Oh, yeah, we can get that. We have those numbers in terms of the permits that are sought, as I said, by groups or by individuals. So we can provide that with you, to you, and including the addresses of, as far as individuals and groups.
Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. QCT, 50% of households have income less than 60% of AMI, or poverty is 25% or higher. Neither of those locations qualify under that context in ARPA, for one. I hear people speak about the usage, it's frequently used, especially Shed Park Pavilion, and it might be mixed or diverse, or whatever word they want to throw around. If you took Disney World out of Anaheim, California, and put them in Compton, Compton becomes a tourist destination at that point. So none of that really matters. What we're talking about here is, we have an opportunity before us to look at a big picture, one-time funds. How are we going to help the most amount of people for the longest amount of time? And it just doesn't sit right when we're looking at two locations that have been basically deferred maintenance to the point where they're in disrepair, and now we want to allocate all these resources to two locations and ignore the rest of the city, or divide up a minimal amount of money to go to the rest of the city. There's been conversations about making Lowell a destination city. If we added the 5 million, the 4.25 million, the 6.25 million, it's almost 16 million dollars. $2 million per district would increase citywide, green space, other projects that qualify, and I'm not just focused on the QCTs. I'm talking about every district. So now every district would have the opportunity to create a mini Disneyland. So those, obviously in Centerville where I represent, we have to rent the pavilion, the Shed Park, for a birthday party if it's raining out, or because the amenities, splash pad, restroom, track, ball fields, tennis court. It's a great facility, and it's well-used. Everyone in the city knows it far and wide. Merrimack Valley, people utilize it. Why don't we start pivoting and looking at, how can we create a mini version of that in all of the districts? So our residents all have a place within their neck of the woods to utilize. I mean, the arguments can be had about, yeah, this location services a lot of the community. But again, it's that one location that can service the 113,000 as opposed to eight locations to service the 113,000. So I don't know if this is correct, but can I make a motion to send at least the equity-focused service piece to Finance Subcommittee?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, we expected that this will go to Subcommittee Counselor. This was, as I said at the outset, this wasn't by any means meant to say, this is etched in stone. This was meant to, as we've gathered information, put something before the council. But we totally expect the council, in the weeks and months coming forward, will be working on this and coming up with, you know, again, with input from the community, and all of the community. So whichever Subcommittee the council thinks is appropriate, I think that that makes perfect sense. It's what we expected.
Thank you very much.
We're approaching the summary call for public hearing and knowing this is going to be a Subcommittee?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. There's a motion on the floor.
The motion is to send the equity-focused service piece of the ARPA proposal to Subcommittee Finance and seconded by Counsel Rourke.
Counsel Rourke.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Clerk.
Can I just ask clarification?
Counsel Hing.
Yeah, just for clarification, are we going to send the whole report, though, to another Subcommittee, or just one?
Equity-focused services underneath, and that's the total of, I believe, 25.196-098. It's project number 2022-06. I believe in the packet, it's page 46.
Right, but what I'm going to ask is, shouldn't the whole, shouldn't the whole report go to Finance Subcommittee?
Okay, yeah. If that's easier, we'll send the whole report.
Yeah, we should discuss the whole package, so.
Thank you.
Do you want to amend it, or just?
I'll amend the motion, send the whole report to Finance Subcommittee, please.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
It being around seven o'clock, we're going to come back to the motion response after the general public hearings. For general public hearings, 4.1, loan order, historic preservation bonds, open to the public, all in favor. This section is open. This section is closed. All opposed? Any comments? Hearing none. Make a motion, the motion adopt and refer to clerk's office for 20 days by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Roll call, please.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
4.2, loan order, open space and recreation bonds. All in favor, this section is open. Any comments? Mr. Monahan?
Hello, Jack Monahan, 88 Prescott Street. And I, in the spirit of full disclosure, I should also mention that I'm a member of the Board of Mill City Grows and also a volunteer and supporter of Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. Thank you, Mayor Chow and Manager Donahue and Council. I think this would be a very good investment for the city in that it would preserve very scarce green space, as well as helping to preserve the legacy of the last farm in Lowell. I'm sure many families had a tradition of visiting that farm on a yearly basis, perhaps particularly near the holidays. And that tradition could to some degree be continued in the generations to come. These three organizations have a very good track record as far as education, and I think that this can, that this project, excuse me, this project can help expand educational and recreational opportunities for young people in general. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Any more in favor? Any more in favor? That section is closed. Anyone opposed? Any opposed? That section is closed. Motion to adopt and refer to clerk's, Counsel Noon? I've just finished reading the whole thing. Motion to adopt to refer to clerk's office for 20 days by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Roll call, please.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yum?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Getchier?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Thank, yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
Five, utility public hearing, 5.1, Boston Gas, DBA National Grid, request installation of two of new two-inch gas main from Summer 3 Beach Street to 6th Street. Section open to all in favor. Do you have a speak on this, Mr. Clerk?
No, we don't.
This section is closed. Section is open to all those who oppose. All who oppose. This section is closed. Motion to refer to a wide inspector for report and recommendation by Counselor Leahy, seconded by Counselor Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is approved. We're going to go back to complete the motion response. We left off at D, demotion response, packs building communication. Any comments? Hearing none. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we were just looking to the council for indication whether you want us to do that. I mean, there's a 17,000 some odd price tag, so we're happy to, we have the draft. It's just, we got the information. We just want to know what the will of the body is, as far as sending out the communication.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Madam Manager. At this point, the bills are all out. There's also been a notice now, I think in the Lowell Sun, there was a story about it. I would not recommend that we do not send out the bills at this point in time. I just think it's too late at this point. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I know enough to follow the motion. I haven't, I guess, heard the outcry early on over the past, I'd say, month. So hopefully the message is out there, and, you know, if need be, revisit this down the line. Thank you.
Counsel Getchier?
I would agree. I just have one question through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Do we, are we getting overwhelmed with calls in that office, or is it?
The treasurer's office had quite a few calls in the beginning. We had calls, but we aren't getting calls anymore, I think is fair to say.
So if it's manageable, I agree with Counsel Scott.
Seeing all the hands, we go to E, motion response, Chapter 90 funding. Any comment? Counsel Getchier?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. It looks like you worked magic. The governor somehow put a supplement budget piece in to add $100 million to that line item. So it looks like those letters worked magic even before they were sent. Thank you.
Hearing other comments, we go to F, motion response, open gym activities. Any comments? Counsel Robinson?
I would just like to say thank you, everyone involved. It's great. I think our youth service Subcommittee went well. I think the Rec Department is doing great work, and I appreciate the administration. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Seeing all the hands, we go to G, motion response, miscellaneous sidewalk repair. Any comments? Counsel Getchier?
Through you to the manager. I'm just wondering, I see that it went out to bid, and the bid ranges from 943,000 to 1.28 million dollars. I'm wondering how we went out with quantities on this and without a sidewalk assessment or inventory done, and how do we come to this number without having these in place? Normally, when you go with a bid for something, you have the areas in place or the quantity. So I guess what, my question is that, before we did any of this, shouldn't we have the sidewalk inventory and done and assessed, so we know exactly what we have?
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I believe the city engineers here, Ting Chang, I would refer to your question, Counselor, to Ms. Chang, as far as the process for the bid process was used.
Good evening, City Council. So we have the, we have roughly, the numbers come up right is, we know we have about approximately a million dollars of sidewalk capital funds. So we have a rough estimate out how many sidewalks and handicap ramps that we can focus with this amount. Basically, we're looking at bids of 3,000 cubic yard of, hold on one second, let me pull up my list. So we're looking at about fixing 200 to 300 handicap ram itself. And then based on roughly, we're looking at each handicap ram with the transition panel, it's about, you'll use about 10 to 15 square yard. So we roughly estimate about 3,000 square yard for that. So you will, about 200 to 300 location that we can fix. And then also the sidewalk itself, we estimated about 1,000 square yards. So if we use roughly five feet by five feet panel, we're talking about ballpark. So we will fix about 360 panel. And then with the miscellaneous stuff, like if we have to, some of the sidewalk have retaining wall behind it or step behind it, so we'll put a line item in there, just so we can have a number if we just encounter to those. Same thing with tree pit, some location, especially in downtown areas, we have tree, so we have put line item in there, so we have a unit cost. We have developed a list of the sidewalks that needs to repair already, and it's still ongoing. The goal is to have this contract is, we engineers going to be out there, kind of like, almost like babying this. It will be like a design build. We will indicate, we'll walk with the contractor, say, okay, we want about probably 10, 10 location open up at a times, so on one side of the street, so that way it doesn't impact any handicaps on all the location, at the same location, so other people can walk on the other side of street. So, and then we're roughly thinking about, they can do 10 of them. Usually we'll, about one truckload of concrete, so that will be, we'll get a pretty good price on it, so it will make sense. So that's how we generate, somewhat generate this kind of number, come up with it. We will continue to work on our list. We have, you know, somewhat of map indicating a downtown map, where the locations are we want to fix. We've been continuing walking the sites. And so we also create a map on all the school and municipal buildings around the city, so we will be pinpointing all the location that we're going to fix. And I totally agree with Counsel Getchier that the sidewalk assessment is necessary, and we are planning, we have actually get quotes from firms that potentially to do a sidewalk assessments citywide. We'll be coming in on FY23s to hopefully asking for funding to do so, because we have done it for the roadway, and it was very, very helpful. We use that to do roadway pavement repairs and maintenance, and as a priority, use that as a priority list, to come up with the paving list. So we're hoping that we can have the same assessment on the sidewalk and do the similar things. And I'm sure we'll be coming in front of the council again to ask for more funding to do more sidewalk repair as well.
I personally don't think you should be coming back to the council for any more funding. What I think is this year, what you should be doing is taking 150,000 out of that million dollars and getting a sidewalk assessment done first, because then you have knowns and not just guessing. When I read this memo, I see that there's one square mile that's being looked at and not the rest of the city. I see that we have a lot of downtown streets, and that's what we're looking at. I heard that in the conversation just now, is that, but the city's much broader than that, much like the roadway construction pieces where you have an assessment done on those. So I would, I would ask that, number one, you would use that money in the beginning to do the sidewalk assessment and get the inventory down first, so we have an actual cost before you come back here for more money. And out of that million dollars, that's the only way to start a process fresh. And I still don't know why in 2022 that we don't have a sidewalk assessment in the city. And it's not, it's not on you. It's just the way that this government has worked in this city. It seems like we just put out fires rather than planned fires. In the bidding process, instead of going by quantities, if we had locations and everything, it would actually drop the bid pricing because people would actually have knowns on where they have to drive the trucks, where the equipment goes and things like that, rather than just bidding out a quantity. I've seen it for many years. If you know the locations, the price is usually cheaper than if you just do quantity bidding. So I just think that for efficiency purposes, we should definitely do the assessment piece and inventory first, and, you know, shrink down the quantities this year and make sure that we have that in place, and then come back to the council for more money if it's needed, because we'll have some backup to actually replace those things. And that's just, my concerns is that we're doing it backwards. We're just doing quantities, and then the contractor's in control when you do quantities.
We'll be out there measuring it as well at the same time. So I understand, I totally get what you mean by the assessment need to be done. I'm totally on board with that.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to make a similar comment about prioritization. You know, I've been approached quite a few times about sidewalks crumbling at the
You know, I've been approached quite a few times about sidewalks crumbling at the Codenall O'Connell School, in front of the Butler School, so I was just trying to see how we were setting that priority.
So this priority is mainly focused on downtown, school, and municipal building. So that's why it's narrowed it down. The first, the first batch is the downtown area, and we're now currently looking at school and municipal building, as they go. I'm happy to share more information as we continue to develop this list with the council.
Council Robinson? Or do you want Madam Manager to go, Madam Manager?
No, I just wanted to point out what, the, the focus, and, and I don't think there's any disagreement about doing a citywide sidewalk assessment, and that is the request, as she said, in the capital budget, but the focus, as I understood it, was to address these handicap ramps-
Absolutely.
-that are in disrepair, and really hazard for, I mean, that, that's been a major complaint as far as the condition, so, but we're happy to consider other options, but that, that was really one of the concerns.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I was gonna ask the maker of the motion, if that was, are we talking the handicap accessible ramps, or are we talking sidewalks? Because the way it's written, it's a update regarding sidewalk plan, there's really not too much mention of just the handicap accessible.
It's focusing on wheelchair ramps, which is handicap accessible, and also the concrete panel that's pop up, that had causing trip hazards, so those will be the one that repair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and I understand what you're saying with the report, but what I did want was an assessment around the city. And right now, I understand what Councilor Gisia is saying, but I just think that we kinda know right now where all the rough spots are, and I'd like to see a plan to fix some of the rough spots in the neighborhoods. And I get with downtown, you know, there's a, there's a couple of sidewalk panels that are damaged right over here-
Mm-hmm.
...by the library, and they've been damaged for years now, you know? And we get out there in May, and we have the fireman's mass, and the, and the remembrance, and, and the sidewalk should have been repaired years ago, you know? And so that's the stuff I was looking for. I think this is a good start, and I think it does need to be done, but I would like to see, you know, everybody's got a few sidewalks in their district now, and we have to deal with this as a district plan now, you know? Not really citywide, but we have to take a look at districts and citywide. And I'm wondering if we could just come back with a, just an assessment on what we might be able to do in the neighborhoods, you know? I know we can't fix every single street, every single sidewalk in the neighborhood, but there are a few trouble spots in the neighborhoods that we really would like to get fixed. And, and then do, you know, a lot of this repair downtown, which is very important, too, so, thank you.
I mean, absolutely, if you have certain locations, come on up, and we can absolutely look at them.
Okay. And then, just one other quick question, sorry. If we, so right now, if we're doing repairs, and it's, the sidewalk is asphalt, does it, can it be repaired with asphalt until a later date, when I know we're trying to do the whole sidewalk in cement, but realistically, we're still repairing asphalt sidewalks with asphalt? Or do we have to dig the whole thing up?
This contract will focus on concrete only. If there is a sidewalk that's currently asphalt, and needs some miners patches and stuff like that, our DPW crews can probably handle those.
Okay.
So we send a lot of those onto DPW crews to, to help out as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Gisia?
Again, a reactive government waits for people to call and say there's a complaint, and there's a lot of people who don't call. And the inventory will separate everything, and it needs to be done first before you, and you can absolutely use the other eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix the known ones you have. But without doing an inventory, you're in the same rut you started in. You need to get the inventory done first. That's what every professional government does, they do an inventory, and, and assessment. And to just say, let's throw, you know, wait another year on the assessment, that, that's not good government. The assessment should be done first, and it will save you money when you go to the bidding process, and you have knowns, when, because then people know the distance they have to drive to things, and other things that come into the bidding process.
Any other comment? Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you. So the, I just wanna point out, we have raised this line item in the budget in twenty-two, had been in the past one point some odd million, it was raised to three million to address a number of the issues. But just going back to the handicap issue, this was brought up, it's not this council, but the prior council did bring this up and wanted that addressed. So that was part of the reason, because we had many, many handicap ramps that are just in complete deteriorated condition, and they're very, very dangerous. And so in the, in the response to the motion, there's no disagreement that there should be a citywide assessment, but this is what's hap, what, what the engineering department was doing right now, and it was because of things raised and, and brought forward. So we can certainly look at the sidewalk assessment, which would be citywide, and as Ting has pointed out in her response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to make the presentation and answering the questions. Thank you. Here are other comments, H, motion response, light request at Copper Square parking lot, if no objection, that, that was my motion. I wanna thank Madam Manager for having the electrician to go out and look and plan to fix the light in a big city parking lot behind many businesses in Copper Square. Thank you so much. No other comments? Go to H, motion response, light request at Boral Place, any comment? Here, Council Robinson?
I'd just like to say thank you. The residents there are extremely happy. I showed them this information, and they greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Here are other comments, J, motion response, bulky pickup items, any comment? Council Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, just a quick question on the, this potential plan of bulky pickup item, bulky, bulky item disposal. Is there any potential to include folks who live in larger multi-unit buildings to be able to get rid of bulky items as part of this program, or not? Because currently, obviously, the, the folks who live in the condo buildings are reliant on their condo building to manage their standard trash disposal. And some, some buildings help with bulky items, some buildings don't. So, you know, some of my constituents were wondering if there's any way that folks who are in one of those buildings might be able to tap into a program like this, to make it a little bit easier for those residents to get rid of big things. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
I'm, just for clarification, Council, I'm, do you mean in the current contract, if that could be amended? I'm not, I'm just trying to understand.
Just, just going forward as we're looking.
Oh, going forward, on the new contract.
Yes, we're looking forward.
We can, we can look into what that would entail.
Thank you.
Council Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just having gone through this with UTEC, with Mattress, and Box Spring Pickup, I was informed that all condos have an agreement with either UTEC or Waste Management of where to place the, the bulky items on the property, off the property. You know, it was explained through an email, so hopefully condo president or someone that would know where those items should be shelled on. But Madam Manager, again, two weeks ago, UTEC came and was explaining that with condos, each place has a designated spot to put those items. Thank you.
Here are no other comments, we'll go to the next item, K, motion response, pothole rapid response, that was my motion, if no objection, do you wanna make a quick comment? I wanna, again, thank you, Madam Manager, for the report, and thank you to the DPW pothole rapid response team that's been in working. I know that the, the days immediately after the snowstorm and plowing, there were a lot of potholes, and a lot of frustration to many of the residents in, in our city, just driving around the, the last couple of days, I see many of those potholes have been fixed. And if the residents out there still see potholes, please report, there's a pothole section on our city webpage, and they have been responding to it within one or two days, so please report them directly to the city website. Council Gisia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Is Christine here?
Yeah.
I ju, I just have a couple of questions. One would be about the hot box. How old is the hot box?
We have one that is two thousand and fourteen, and one to two thousand and eighteen.
And they both heat up, so that you can't keep it long, it turns into a liquid?
I don't, no, essentially, so I did talk to many DPW staff, and both of them, if they're heated after eight to twelve hours, they really turn to, the liquid burns out, and so it turns like a charcoal material.
Is that ours, or you talked to other places, 'cause?
That is ours, and I can reach out to other DPWs, but that's, that is our units. And these are, I mean, some of our staff have been doing this for eight, ten, twenty years, and that is what they have reported to me.
Have we reached out to manufacturer and asked them why that's happening? Because I had one where I came from, and we could pull it in at three o'clock, go get mix at Brock's, pull it in at three o'clock, leave it overnight, and it was still good. So if the night watchman had any calls, they could actually use asphalt?
Sure, I, I can reach out to the manufacturer.
I'm just wondering why it would turn to a liquid that quick.
It's not, it's more the, it dries out, so they say. It, it still works, but it's essentially, it's dried out. And I know if you lower the temperature too, then it's too, it has to be a certain temperature. You don't wanna put asphalt below two twenty-five, so if it's too low, then it's, it turns into a one whole solid rock, and then you have to heat it up to, to get to that temperature.
How would it be too low if it's plugged in in the hot box? The hot box should keep it at the temperature, right?
Right. I know you can set, there's different settings on the temperatures, so you can have it at different temperatures. You can lower, so if you put it on low, it might not maintain the temperature enough.
Well, I hope they're not doing that, because then it goes underneath the usable range, so why would you do that? But the, the next question is that, when they go out and actually do the potholes, I had a resident at eight twelve Stevens Street say that, when they went out to do the pothole in front of her home on Stevens Street, they filled the pothole, and she came out and said, you know, can you take the debris with you at that time? They had a pickup truck, and they were pulling it along, they said, no, that's another crew. Why would we do that, send another crew along to clean up, if that's the case, to clean up when we already have one there?
Well, I know if, I mean, for that one crew, they have one truck, so sometimes, if there is another crew, sometimes it puts asphalt in the back of a truck, not this time of year, though. This is recently. I can follow up with the crew on that.
And my other question is, when, when they go out, how many times do they actually go to Brock's and, and get mix in a day? Each, each one?
Well, we typically, one, once during the day in the morning, and then lately, we've been also having an afternoon crew that goes out around two, two-thirty, and then stays out till about six o'clock.
So they put out one and a half tons from seven o'clock till three o'clock?
They, they get in at seven, gotta go to Brock's, pick it up, so yes. Up to, up to three tons, the units can hold up to three tons, so sometimes they do get two to three tons.
Okay, thank you.
Council Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that after the winter is almost done, that you're gonna see so many numerous potholes, and it sometimes can't be avoided, and I'm not trying to pass blame, but I have never ever, and later on in the agenda, we have nineteen claims for pothole tire damage due to potholes. I'm, I'm shocked by it. I'm, I'm very, very shocked by it. I've never ever in all my life seen, and we get claims every single week, I've never seen that many for one particular item. And I wanna know, are we so short of help that we can't keep on top of it? I know we have like two hundred and eighteen miles of streets in the city, I'm understanding that, and I'm certainly not blaming the crew, but I don't know, what type of a crew do we have? Explain to me what a pothole response team consists of. What is that? How many people is that? The truck, the what? Explain that to me, please.
Sure. So a typical crew is a two-person crew. Sometimes there could be, we don't like to have one, but sometimes it can be one person, sometimes three, but two is the ideal crew size. We do have some limited staff in, in the streets department, we have a total of ten laborers. And so there was one day last week that we pulled our tree crew and put them out to do potholes, so we could have two pothole crews for that day. Sometimes people are out sick, too. So we do, I think we can manage with two crews. Beyond two, we're very limited with that ability to add a third crew. We only have two hot boxes right now, but, and we have added, that's why we're adding this overtime work. We're adding up to twenty hours a week, and, during the week, so that we can add, do more potholes during the week. And once the plants open up, we'll do work on the weekends, too. The staff wants to work on the weekends, but we just have limitations with the plants being open.
Thank you. Because we're defeating our purpose if we're gonna be sued for damages. You know, it's just a vicious cycle. It'd be better to try to get as many potholes as we can than to have claims, and we're gonna pay anyway, so I'd rather fix the potholes. Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Real quick, are they using the walk behind power tamps when they go out and doing pothole patches?
They, they, they use the hot box, and they use a shovel.
That might be a, a suggestion, is, is possibly look into like a power tamp, because that allows, I know in other communities, you, you fill the hole with the, the asphalt, tamp it with the power tamper, and it tends to hold up a little bit better, especially where we're still in the season where plow blades are still scratching across the surface, and we're still salting at night sometimes, so, thank you, though.
Here are no other comments. Thank you, Ms. Clancy, for coming to answer these questions. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, motion response, L, Muldoon Park kayak launch, any comment? Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank the Department of Planning and Development for this excellent report. I'm really hopeful that we're able to get this funded, and, and get our kayakers and canoes into the water safely and easily. There's a lot of people, a lot of constituents that reached out to me, actually quite a few in this room. One of them sitting over here. Very happy to see this move forward. The Coquett River is just a beautiful natural resource, Muldoon Park is a beautiful park, and I just hope that we're able to get more people out there using it. Thank you.
That's, that's a great motion, it's a great response. When the launch is done, I'm gonna be one of the first to use my canoe there. M, motion response, Veterans Park, any comment? Here are none. We go to N, motion response, youth programming information on website, any com, Council Leahy, do you wanna speak on?
Thank you, just-
The last one, or the, the last one, the current one?
Through you, the manager. Who's doing the Veterans Park again? The point person?
Christine McCall is here.
Okay. So we're just waiting on a survey of private property, and then?
We, we conducted a survey as part of the project, and we noted that a fence, and a budding neighbor's fence is on city property, so we are working with that abutter. They have requested to do their own survey-
Right.
-for a determined final location, and actually exchanged emails with their engineer today, so we're hopeful we can come to a resolution amicably and move forward with the project.
All right. They're just questioning where the line is, obviously, then?
They wanna confirm their survey against ours, which they have that right.
Okay. All right. And then hopefully it might get started in the spring?
We're hopeful that our fence lines will match, so we won't have to further debate or discuss, but yeah, we are hopeful we can move forward the project this spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Here are no other comments, we'll go to N, motion response, youth programming information on website, any comment? Council Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Great step. Again, youth service, this is something that came up, we're working, trying to wrap our heads around information sharing, and I think this is a great addition. Quick question, I, one of the organizations reached out to me, they weren't included on this for some reason, is there a point of contact or point person that I can refer any of the organizations to get their information included?
Yeah, I would suggest they contact Phil Jeffroy in my office-
Okay.
-and he can follow up with them.
Thank you very much.
If you wanna give us their contact, we can follow up, whichever is easiest.
Okay, thank you very much.
Here are no other comments, we'll go to O, motion response, election polling locations and sup, and supplies, any comment? Council Scott?
I just have one question. This, through Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, there's a section in here that talks about there needing to be a demonstrated need to increase the polling numbers. Didn't we have a, and I didn't get a chance to find it, didn't we have a report that showed some districts that were unbalanced, like that, you know, people had to travel farther away than other districts?
Mr. Mayor, if this solicitor could-
Madam Manager?
Answer.
Thanks. We did. I mean, most, the best example of that is, is any kind of river crossing, and, and yes, distance. So it's really just tracking the advice from the Secretary of State's office, that there, you know, it should be solving- that there, you know, it should be solving, when we add these places, it should be solving a, a problem that needs to be solved, is, is I think what they're getting at.
And how would that process move forward right now with any type of redistricting and adding polling locations? I'm sorry, not redistricting, adding, adding additional polling locations?
So the, and I know we have a, uh, election commissioner here this evening, um, and, um, uh, and the chair, actually, excuse me. But, um, but that would be, the election commission will be the entity, the board, uh, the commission going through that process. It will be an open, open process and, um, and then the public will be able to, um, address any of these kinds of issues. If, if somebody from the last election or prior elections had difficulty getting to a particular spot or found a particular spot that had been designated by the city to be not particularly useful, um, that's the type of stuff that the, the type of comments, uh, in fact finding that the election commission can and, and certainly will be doing.
Okay, so we should direct concerns from residents to the election commission, would that be appropriate?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Um, can I make a motion to send this to, uh, the election and polling subcommittee for further discussion and review?
Motion by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Nguyen, on the favor of the eye, post say no, the eyes have it, the motion is moved.
Thank you.
Hearing no other comments, we go to P, motion response, changing voting system to elect mayor, any comment, Counselor Yem?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Solicitor, for a great detailed report. May I ask you to summarize quickly, uh, your report so that, for the benefit of the people that are watching us on TV? Thank you.
Sure, I, I think at this point, this issue has been also referred, uh, previously to the, um, subcommittee. And this was really just intended to provide, um, the members of the council, as well as in particular, the members of that subcommittee, with, uh, what has gone on already as we, um, uh, as the council moves through this, this issue. And also what, uh, what, what has happened in Worcester, how they, uh, perform this, uh, this, this election, which is done just from those candidates who, um, run at large. Here, we have a different number of, um, number of members that are running at large, only three. So, uh, that would be something that would need to be considered as well. And I think, uh, Counselor Robinson had requested, um, input perhaps from, uh, the Worcester representative, who actually has worked with us in the past and has come, uh, to the city to present in the past. And so would be happy to work with the subcommittee in getting a date perhaps to see if he can join us even via Zoom, um, something like that. And, uh, and, and, uh, and perhaps also invite, uh, members of the election commission to go.
Um, I would like to, um, you mentioned that this, uh, motion had been referred to the subcommittees, the election laws and redistrict subcommittees, and I would like to see that, the one thing that I see that law is a bit different from Worcester and then we, we will discuss it at a subcommittee that, you know, the Worcester only, the council at large can run for the mayor. And while, you know, I, I, I don't, um, I'm not in, I'm not in favor of that, I want to be able to allow district candidate, uh, district, uh, counselor to make their, their wish known that I'm running for, uh, the mayor, so.
Counselor Nguyen?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, Counselors, uh, Yem, uh, put this on and respond to a non-binding referendum. And that non-binding referendum, the previous council, I believe, Counselor Rodney, uh, Counselor Elliott and Counselor Mercier, uh, put it on. Um, we, some of the council from previous, uh, council have also expressed our, our, um, you know, uh, what, what we like to see, uh, not Worcester, of course. Um, so I know Counselor Drinkwater is, and I share the same concern. That is, we cannot adopt, we should not adopt the Worcester, uh, 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 framework. Uh, we need to find our own law framework and to do that, we need to go through the subcommittee, the election subcommittee, and this, whatever we do here, uh, need to be, uh, okay, uh, by the plaintiff as well, because we do have a consent decree. And I bet you that the plaintiff and plaintiff attorney would not support, uh, the framework of the Worcester. Uh, we need to have a framework, that framework need to allow everyone, uh, every council, district or at large, a chance to put their name for the mayorship, uh, for the election by the, uh, the people or the voter. And that's, and that's need to be eyeing out, uh, on the, the, the subcommittee, uh, it shouldn't, I mean, so, so, it's nice that Counselor Yem put it on, uh, but that has to be addressed at the subcommittee and, and, and Counselor, uh, Corey, uh, Counselor Robinson is correct. If they may wanna invite, if we want to invite the Worcester representative who, uh, knew, knew the Worcester framework, but I, I, I bet you that, um, it's not gonna work in law, uh, because the consent decree and because the plaintiff and plaintiff attorney would not, would not agree to it. And, 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 and I know that the solicitor have been in communication with them from the previous council. You were also a part of that councils as well, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Does Solicitor want to, may I comment first, then we go to Counselor Rock? Madam Solicitor?
Sure, just to, uh, just to add on, we, uh, most recently were, uh, in contact with plaintiff's counsel at, um, uh, the end of the last term of the, uh, of the council. And, um, it was, uh, it was their desire to, uh, to keep everything on the table, but also to, uh, to wait until the new council is seated. And, um, uh, and then I can begin reporting back to them what, uh, what the new council is, um, is thinking of and, um, and go from there.
Counselor Rock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And having been on the chair of last council's, um, elections subcommittee, you know, we discussed this multiple times, multiple motions were filed, and you're basically looking at what the response states to the council now. Either you go with Cambridge's way or the, the law way of elected body picks the mayor, or you go through the Worcester way of, of your at-large counselors being eligible, uh, to be the mayor based on the highest vote. Uh, there was talk last year about having a, another, I guess you would say ballot or another spot on the ballot, um, just for, for, for the mayor as well. Uh, but if you do do that, you're gonna run into the same problem as why we changed, uh, into district representation in the first place. Uh, so, you know, we can go to a subcommittee again, um, but, you know, this has been vetted many times. You know, I think the seventy-five percent vote, uh, on elected mayor last year, in my opinion, was more along the lines of based on a strong mayor process, um, rather than the ceremonial, um, plan E form um, that the, uh, the mayor is, uh, is in place by now. You know, I, I think if you ask somebody if I'm with the company, they're gonna tell you, yeah, we do it six to five and the five that run in at large, the ones that get the most votes gets first choice if they want to be the service mayor or not. Um, but if it's the will to go to another subcommittee, um, then this will be it. But, you know, this is not, nothing new that, uh, that has been dealt with. You know, the, the, before there are requirements in place of, of going to, uh, the, the plaintiffs and making sure that it drives with them as well, but, you know, maybe the fairest way is, is to keep it, maybe it's not, but that's basically, you know, I think the major two options, without going to a strong mayor, change of government altogether, is either doing the way we do it now or you have your at-large, uh, as the only candidates to be the mayor, thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, so, as the chair of this year's, uh, this, this cycle's, you know, voting and election subcommittee, um, my train of thought was, I just received a notice, this was referred there, Counselor Yem's motion. I think it's, uh, I think it's we all, at least, to call a subcommittee meeting, invite everybody in and let's start the conversations and see if we can come up with a, a, a plan that fits what we're looking for. Hopefully we can, no guarantees, but I think without having the conversations with, uh, experts in the area, that's why I suggested to the solicitor to bring in Worcester, because it might not be an ideal plan, but plan E form of government, they do have something similar to what we're looking for. I think it's a good starting point and I think, uh, the more conversations we can have and invite people in to get feedback and input, maybe we can find what we're looking for, thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna express my support for the, the subcommittee meeting. The, um, the plaintiffs have expressed that they're looking for guidance from the, the current council. Um, and I think the appropriate place to start, um, is with the, the subcommittee and then to bring the discussion to the, to the larger council. But I, I see no reason why, um, you know, we, we should be bound by the exact way, uh, that Worcester does it. They certainly provide a, a model, but I also see no reason why we could not open the, the process of, uh, being elected a plan E mayor to every, um, counselor who's, who makes the ballot, uh, whether they're running at large or, or in a district. Um, I think that is the fair way to do it. I don't think we can squeeze ourselves into Worcester's model with only half the number of at-large counselors on the ballot that you have on the ballot in Worcester. And, um, and I really see no reason why we couldn't adapt, uh, their system to the, the needs of Lowell and make it a fair system for the city. So, um, as I've, uh, said in the past, um, I, I do support, uh, the change in allowing the people to vote, um, but only if, uh, the process is open to, uh, to each of the counselors who, who are on the ballot, not just at large. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Rock?
I'll support the subcommittee, but I'll just leave it at this, that if you open it up that way, we have everybody that runs for our district or at large that could run for mayor. Uh, there'll be seven or eight counselors that will have zero chance of ever being the mayor, thank you.
Counselor Nguyen?
Mr. Mayor, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the package also, Mr. Mayor, motion respond to my motion regarding the, um, uh, the work, um, with the, um, the manager work with the election office, is, is, is on the package, but it's not on the agenda. Uh, I, I wanna, also wanna just say thank you to the, uh, election department. And I know that there's some challenge that we have had, uh, from last year because of the new hybrid system. And I just wanna, you know, to see if we can, when we send this to the election subcommittee and just talk more about what some of the, uh, steps are taken to make sure that the future election is more efficient and convenient, uh, as possible for all voters, so. So I just wanna say that, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, uh, the section of the motion response is finished. Now we go to six point two, informational reports, Q, informational, AWP, budget plan, Madam Manager?
I already took care of it.
We have registered speaker, would you like the, registered speaker to go first?
Mr. Mayor, I was just sorry, I sent to a subcommittee?
This, this was referred to finance?
Right.
Subcommittee?
Okay, so it's referred to, okay. We do have registered speaker, this being referred to the subcommittee. Do the speakers still would like to speak now or wait till the subcommittee? Do we have anybody in the room that would like to speak?
It was Jeff Thomas? And, uh, Yun Ju Choi?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here today. Um, um, today I'm here to express some, some of my thoughts on, um, AWP, um, budget plan. And I'm actually really glad to hear that this is a working document. Last couple of years has been a very difficult for all of us. And I'm really glad that, um, the city received almost seventy-six million dollars to replace lost revenues, respond to public health emergencies and to strengthen cities' financial positions. This is a once in a lifetime, uh, opportunity for the city and I hope, um, city really puts all of our heads together to spend this money most, um, most impactfully as possible. And I'd like to thank, um, CFO Baldwin and, um, his team for like hard work, as I read this, um, report several times and it was a lot of work, so thank you for your work. And, so, I, I know there was some, um, conversations about, um, you know, park, but I, um, park, um, spending and things, but I still would like to really talk about equity-focused service category. Um, for the budget, um, looking at the budget, it's twenty-five percent, uh, twenty-five million dollars, which is about a third of the budget. However, when you take a look at the, um, line items, fifteen point five million dollars is set aside for park improvements. Of that, nine point two five million is for two parks that are not in qualified census tract area. Six point two five million is set aside for remainder of seventy parks in the city of Lowell. I don't see how this can be considered equity-focused. Furthermore, there is almost four million dollars set aside, reserved eligible capital investment and improvements to municipal facilities. I'm not sure if this fits in this category either. For the rest, twenty, two point five million dollars is set aside for homeless prevention, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for mobile, uh, mo, um, book mobile for a library and two point one, um, million dollars for community-driven projects. Lowell is receiving these funds due to large part of diverse, um, diversity of Lowell population and understand, with the understanding that pandemic has mostly, most deeply failed communities of color and other communities impacted by systematic inequalities. As such, the voices of our diverse community must be heard and centered when planning and spending this money. Two point one million dollars out of seven point six million dollars, and I don't see any other areas where this population is being, um, highlighted. And, um, and I do think that community input session, um, should be, should be done properly. Um, little, little over a hundred, um, surveys that were, um, received to, um, to the city and seventy-nine of them were for the library project, so there were only about thirty of us other than the library project that actually put an input in it. That is not a true community input, uh, in my opinion. And it's such a, it's such a, um, big opportunity and, um, to not hear from all the people that were mostly impacted by this, um, I don't think we're doing a justice to the city. And I know there was also a survey that went out, uh, by the city. I'm not sure how many people actually filled that out, I know that was, uh, sent out in different languages. Um, and I would like to actually see the, um, detailed data on, um, cross, um, cross-referencing um, the languages that were responded and what they were focusing. And what, um, I, I'm not sure if there was a demographic, I filled it out, but I'm not sure if there was a demographic on it. And one of the category what, on there was broadband, um, infrastructure. And I know that's not on the budget right now. And when COVID first happened and when all the children were sent home, one of the biggest crises that we, um, we saw as a community was, um, broadband infrastructure. And the fact that that's not even on the list, and I know that's a big ticket item, that I really do think that, you know, having input from the community members of what the real needs are would be really important. So I really do look forward to going to the, um, finance committee, uh, meeting and also for city to have, um, wider community input sessions and CBA and other organizations would love to help to, and then we actually have proven that we can get hundreds of people out for these type of meetings. So, um, I truly hope we can be a partner in deciding, you know, where this important money is gonna go. And that being said, personally, I would really love to see a lot of the money going to infrastructure and capital improvements to really help the city in a long-term, not just, uh, you know, short-term fixes and, you know, giving away certain, you know, amount of money. And the other thing that I just wanna mention is a lot of nonprofits are coming out and constantly talking about community input and it's not because we're looking for money. We're really, um, asking for, uh, for our community input because we've been working with the community for the last two years and we see what the issues were and what was, what's on the, um, budget doesn't exactly reflect the need that we see, so thank you very much.
Thank you, seeing no other registered speaker, uh, Counselor Gishia?
And through you to Connor Baldwin, Connor, um, at the beginning, there was an interim final, um, rule and that started in May of twenty-one and in January of this year, they changed it to a final rule to give broader range of actually expenditures from what I'm reading all the way through. And it, it just depends on, at least what I'm reading through, is that it's how creative you are with putting in the letter to them, so that there's ways of being more creative than others. And, and what, what I would ask is that we would look at, at doing it to the Department of Treasury and just drawing up a letter and, and just going through and seeing if we can get creative enough so that we could try to use more of these funds to the high school project. And, and not only, cause I, I think there's a way to be creative enough when, when we start reading about some of the responses and what people are getting, uh, and how they're getting their money to use at different building projects and, and other things throughout this, throughout the country. And, and it's concerning that, you know, again, that we have an opportunity here to try to use these that way and try to blend them in somehow or move the pieces. use these that way and try to blend them in somehow or move the pieces, as the Powers and Sullivan report said. There's creative ways, if you have capital out in the out years, maybe pay for those upfront if they fit within the capital plan, and then use those funds to offset some of the payment at the high school. My major concern here tonight is that we keep looking at like parks, and 20% of the money is gonna go to parks. And that, that's an awful lot of money when we have kids playing in sewage in the middle of the roads, like we're in Cuba. And, and that's a problem with the CSOs. When heavy rains come and those sewers flood over, that's sewage coming out, and kids are riding their bicycles through that. And, and I think that that has to be our priority in this surge is like, we went over to Seal Street, and I contacted the Assistant City Manager, and she was extremely helpful in, in trying to help out in the situation. But when it rains real heavy, you got sewage coming back into people's homes and into the street, and it's not draining. And we talked about it in Senaval. I think that before we start looking at pavilions and stuff like that, that we have to look at the health aspect of certain homes and the combined sewer overflows that are a major problem. And like I spoke to the manager on this, and she had stated that it would be an over a billion dollars to straighten out Lowell. Well, it has to start somewhere. People are having raw sewage into the street. That's what a combined sewer overflow is. It means that when someone flushes their toilet in heavy rains, guess where it comes? Right onto the street. And people drive through it. It's on their cars, it's on, and, and kids like to see puddles, and they like to drive through with their bicycles and stuff. So I think before we get into this, let's get into all of these parks and all of these other things, infrastructure is the way to go. And, and it has long-term benefits at today's dollars. So I, I just, I really implore you just to please look into that, the, the final plan and see if there's a creative way that we could put some writing together that maybe we can fit high school projects in that area. Because as we all know, the price is going up, and, and people have been creative on applying for these things, and the Treasury has really bent over backwards to try to spend these funds because they gave communities more money than anyone was ready to spend like this. And I just wanna leave it at that. And I know it was referred to a subcommittee, but I just ask you to look into that. Thank you.
Counselor Lucio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This American, this ARPA proposal is a draft. Is it a draft?
Yes, Counselor.
It can be changed?
Positively.
Okay.
And it was intended to go to the council.
That's what it is, yeah.
For the council, for the community, for the next administration.
And I'm wondering, when we talk about infrastructure, to me, infrastructure is roads and bridges and things like that, especially to me, infrastructure, streets. Would it be streets? It's streets, isn't it?
I'm gonna refer, as far as ARPA, this question to Connor, because he's been working in great detail around the ARPA funding.
Mr. Baldwin?
Infrastructure, tell me what that is.
Sure. So within the legislation that created the, the ARPA funding for cities and towns across the country, it is very specific as to what infrastructure means. So it's water and sewer infrastructure as well as broadband. There are opportunities under the revenue loss calculation for broader governmental services, but it's, it's very restrictive in what infrastructure is. And within the final rule, the final rule, rather, it is more restrictive as to what is capital and what is eligible for capital under the, the final rule from the U.S. Treasury. So water and sewer infrastructure are broadly eligible, but outside of that, there needs to be, and to Counselor Gisia's point about creativity, there's sort of a two-part test that the city will continue to look to in making things eligible. One, how did COVID-19 create the problem that you're trying to address? And then number two, how are the funds in response to the COVID-19 pandemic? Those are the, you know, it's written throughout the federal regulations, the U.S. Treasury rule, but those are the guidance that, that we'll be using moving forward.
Now, I know that infrastructure is about sewage and combined sewer overflow and things like that, but I'm thinking infrastructure, streets, public safety, street lines, painting this crosswalks, painting the lines in the street to create safety for the public driving. But 76 million of that money, nothing can go to the streets in that respect, can it?
Mr. Baldwin?
If I may add, you know, along the lines of being creative, typically when replacing water and sewer infrastructure, you have to dig up the street in order to get to the utility. So the, the paving of the, the street to put it back, that would be an eligible cost, so long as it is an incidental component of a water and sewer infrastructure project.
So we should look for the worst streets in the city and just figure that the piping underneath needs to be addressed, and then we could probably pave it. Wouldn't that be creative? But I'm just kidding, but I'm thinking.
Now, that, that is something that can be done. You know, you could look in a section and replace the combined sewer, separate the combined sewer.
Cause they're doing.
And replace the pipes. And then you could do the paving, but it would have to all be related to the sewer project or the CSL project in that case, or, or the pipes in that case. So I think that's in, in terms of what's being talked about being creative, those are some things that can legitimately be done. And then strategically pick where those things should happen. Maybe pick the worst street. Maybe pick this, you know.
And I'm thinking about a city that needs lines painted. We can't even do that. $76 million, we can't paint lines down Princeton Boulevard or Middlesex Street.
Well, we are getting a price for that, Counselor, to, to have it done citywide. I know, I don't know if she's still here, but Christine McCall, I know, is, is, you know, looking into that.
That's important to a lot of people.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, Mr. Rourke, and Counselor Scott. This is referred to subcommittee. Still want to make comments here tonight? You're okay? Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Yem, seconded by Counselor Scott. All in favor say aye, opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. I still see that we have some people waiting to speak. And Mr. Clerk, can you tell me which item that we have registered speaker for? Maybe we can get a motion to move these agendas around a little bit, have the people speak first, and then.
7.5, 8.1, the auditor, subcommittee report, audit personnel subcommittee report, 10.3, Counselor Noonan's motion.
Okay. Could I get a motion to move up 7.5, 8.1, and 10.13? By Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Gisia. So I'm just hoping that we.
Mr. Mayor, we have somebody here for 6.3 as well. Can we include that?
For 6.3, do, do we have registered speaker for that?
Never mind, cancel that. Wrong Judith.
She's on, she's next on the agenda.
Oh, that's the next one. Okay, all right, that's the, all right. So why don't we take, I believe a 6.3 is gonna be the quickest. Why don't we take a motion? No, you changed your mind? Okay, all right. We'll start with 7.5. Is that okay by everybody? Okay, 7.5, vote authorize city manager to execute First Amendment to building and rooftop lease agreement, where full reading and second reading by title. Got my glass, turn this thing on. Vote authorizing the city manager to execute a First Amendment to a building and rooftop lease agreement between the city of Lowell, city, and cell co-partnership DPA Verizon Wireless Verizon, which lease grants the right to Verizon to use rooftop space situated on property located at 11 Post Office Square, BKA 47 Father Morissette Boulevard, Lowell, Massachusetts, the property, for the purpose of the installation, operation, and maintenance of wireless communication equipment. A motion to adopt by Counselor. Do we have registered speaker on that?
Yep. Thomas Hildreth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to appear by Zoom for, for this evening. This is a pretty straightforward administrative matter. The city and Verizon entered into a kind of a master lease agreement in 2017 that provided for about 50 small cells to be placed on utility poles within the city's public rights of way, but also provided for Verizon to lease space on three city-owned properties, including this one. This is the AOT parking garage on Father Morissette Boulevard. We entered into a separate lease under that umbrella master agreement for this very same space in April of 2021, and we permitted that facility last summer with the zoning board. But before Verizon actually installed the permitted equipment, its RF engineers determined that they needed a few more antennas to provide the service that they're looking to provide in that part of the city's downtown. So this First Amendment would allow them to put up that additional equipment and a corresponding increase in the rent. The annual rent was previously scheduled to start at $14,400 per year, and it would now be $24,000 in the first year if this amendment is, is approved.
No, no other speaker? Any other comment? Counselor Yem?
Just a quick questions. With that new installation of the Verizon equipment, will there be interference with an emergency radio or things like that for the police and the fire department? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, there, there should not be. Mr. Counselor, the FCC licenses wireless communications equipment, both emergency responders and commercial carriers like Verizon, with discrete, you know, bands of the radio frequency spectrum, so that there is not interference. And, you know, we've got facilities deployed, you know, all over the city and all over the country, and that's not a problem, and we certainly won't experience that here.
Thank you.
No, no other questions? Motion to adopt by Counselor Leahy, seconded by Counselor Gisia. Roll call, please.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gisia?
Yes.
Counselor Lahey?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
We're now gonna go to eight reports of the subcommittee. 8.1 subcommittee reports, the auditor clerk oversight and personnel subcommittee February, February 22nd, and youth service subcommittee February 24th. What we do with, just the first one? Auditor clerk oversight and personnel subcommittee February 22nd. Any comment?
There is registered speakers, Your Honor. Judith Durant?
Thank you, councilors, Mayor Chow, Madam Manager and staff. Thanks for hearing me tonight. Like others in the community, I attended the Personnel Subcommittee last week, and I'm concerned about the hiring of the next manager. When the, while the council, it's their purview not to offer the current manager a one-year contract extension, I think that one year would have allowed for more thorough discussion of what the city is looking for in a manager, as well as time for public input. The one-month search schedule now proposed seems very rushed, and I ask the council to consider extending the current manager's contract for one or two months to allow for sufficient time to attract and interview candidates. I'm also concerned about the job description. In a city the size of Lowell, and with the challenges and huge projects ahead, including the high school, getting back on track after the economic impact of COVID, the fair distribution of the ARPA funding, and implementing new diversity, equity, and inclusion policies, I was very surprised to learn that we don't know, we do not ask for any prior municipal management experience. It seems to me that should be one of the top priorities. Also concerning is the implication made by more than one council that the new manager has already been chosen. If there is a candidate for manager who already has the certain support of a majority of the council, why would we proceed with an advertising and interview process? This is exactly the type of hiring process, or lack thereof, that several councillors have been objecting to, one that is not fair and not open. How can you be sure that the ideal candidate is not out there unless you look? Thank you.
Mary Torres via Zoom.
Good evening, councilors, city manager, and all. Let me know if you can hear me. Good. Thank you for your ongoing commitments and care for our communities and the opportunity to speak via Zoom tonight. My name is Mary Torres, and I work with the Lowell Votes Coalition as the coordinator. I wanna thank all the offices for the motion response, what a packed agenda. Lowell Votes wants to continue working with the Elections Commission and Office regarding the polling locations, given public feedback that we did here in some cases, and to promote the subcommittee meetings for public education around the current system and perspective changes with electing the mayor. But speaking on 8.1 regarding the subcommittee report out and next steps of the city manager hiring process, Lowell Votes submitted a letter to you earlier today, which all of the councillors would have received, in which we outline our sincere frustration and concerns over parts of this process. I, I helped write this letter, and so I apologize for its length, and, and first and foremost want to acknowledge and appreciate, you know, the load of this role, especially during pandemic times, and the current office and their efforts. I won't touch on all the points of the letter, but I, and I understand that there will be some changes hopefully on the job description. I agree with some of what Judith and others have put forward, that there needs to be changes there. While there are aspects of this process that have been decided on and that feel woefully insufficient, like the posting period, in order to have some community participation, we ask that the community can help generate or weigh in on two questions that will be asked of all of the candidates. We would like to highlight also that any city manager in their office is strengthened if hiring decisions are made to balance the skills and needs in the office so that they and the city can have higher capacity to serve cross-sector and diverse community needs. And I and several of my colleagues will discuss on motion 10.13 regarding language access. We really want Lowell's leadership to reflect on her and be able to work with the cultural and linguistic fabric of our community. So I put that forward, and you can read more in the letter. We hope that you can give us some feedback on when we can talk through those questions that will be asked. Thank you for your time on this matter.
Sally Coulter?
Councilors and Madam Manager, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Sally Coulter, and I live at 200 Market Street downtown, and would like to address the timeline for hiring the new city manager. The new districts with local councillors was instituted to make sure that different parts of the city were heard. The timeline outlined at the subcommittee meeting does not allow for citizens to weigh in on factors that they think are important in a city manager. I am not sure what the rush is. The city manager, Eileen Donahue, has graciously said that she would stay on until a new manager was chosen. The rush does not give time for reflection and deliberation on even its job description. The city is embarked on several big projects, the renovation of the high school and the Lord Overpass reconstruction, to name two. It behooves the council to consider the best qualifications for this position. It would be appropriate to seek public comment. I attended a downtown neighborhood meeting recently at which the search for the new manager came up. A number of people commented that the timeline was too short and that there were qualifications that these people thought important in identifying, such as administrative experience, public administration background, as well as familiarity inherent in hiring diverse employees. Many wanted to see a professional administrator. If these downtown residents had these opinions, residents in other parts of the city may want to contribute their thoughts. The fast pace of this timeline that has been put forward has discouraged many people from contacting councillors with their thoughts. What's the point, they think? They've already decided. I felt this way, too. I urge councillors to step back and give more time for deliberation, public input, and thorough vetting of candidates. Choosing a new manager is one of the most important duties of a city councillor. Please take the time to do it well. Thank you for allowing me to. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
No other registered speaker. Consul Gishia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Auditor Clerk Personnel Oversight Subcommittee met on Tuesday, February 22nd, to discuss the hiring process of the city manager position. We opened up the floor to the public to have public input first thing at that meeting. All eleven councilors were in attendance. We discussed salary range for the manager position, hiring timeline, and posting the position. Three motions were made and are being brought forward to the council tonight. The first motion was to post the position from March 2nd through March 18th. The motion passed three to zero. The second motion was a motion to set the salary range from $195,000 to the current salary of the city manager. The motion passed three to zero. The third motion was to accept the job description with the addition of the salary range. The motion passed three to zero, and that was the minutes from that meeting.
Consul Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've heard from speakers tonight, as we've all gotten emails over the weekend and through today, as I heard at the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting last night, there is a desire from the public to have more involvement in this process and for this process to be slowed down, to allow for a proper search and input from various parts of the community. I think that this demonstrates a need to at least reexamine what we're doing with this process, and I would encourage my fellow councilors to consider possibly extending the posting timeline at a bare minimum, and if not, you know, finding an alternate path in which we can, you know, do this search such that, such that we're confident in the outcome at the end of the day, that who we hire is the person we want to be leading the city for the foreseeable future. So I appreciate the time to speak, and I'll let others speak at this point.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Chairman Gitchia said, there were three motions that were presented to the subcommittee that were voted on, and those three need to go to the council for a vote as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Here will not need a motion to accept the reports.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was in attendance of the subcommittee meeting, Personnel Subcommittee, too. The public input was brought up by the chair. I think the timing, I'm concerned with the, the opening of a job tomorrow and the 18th, because it will not allow public input. It will not allow public input with the timing that we have. I urge that we extend the deadline at least a week or 10 days from March 18th to allow a little, a little more time, because the manager is not going anywhere. She's agreed to stay on. So that just, I want to just urge that because March 2nd to March 18th, it's not enough time for public input if we value our voter or resident input at all in this process, because this is the most important, one of the most important jobs as a council we do, selecting our next city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Consul Yan?
I'm not sure it's appropriate or not, but may I make the motion to extend the posting of the job until the end of, the end of March? Is that something I'm allowed to? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Rourke?
Mr. Mayor, we've voted on three motions that were taken last week. Then if one of those fails, you need to do a substitute, can do it then. But as Counselor Gitchia said, there were three votes that were taken that need council approval.
So I think, given the different opinion here, what I would request is, we'll make a motion to accept the report of progress and adopt the motions. If it pass, we'll, we'll adopt the motions. If it fail, then we'll go to a secondary motion to, to extend. So a yes would be to accept the report of progress and adopt the motions. A no will have to extend the, extend the timeframe. So I need a motion to accept the report as reports of progress and adopt the motions by Consul Gishia.
Well, I have a question.
Consul Leahy?
Are we voting on all three together or separately, though?
No, just, just the Auditor and Personnel Subcommittee report and, of all three motions correct.
Why wouldn't we vote on them separately, though?
Three motions.
Three motions?
Yeah.
What's the third motion?
Third motion was, oh, accepting the job description.
There were three motions, so there, there are the three motions. Counselor Gitchia?
You know, you know what's really disheartening is we sat in this room on the 22nd with eleven councilors sitting here, and not one of them brought this forward of changing this timeline. I would have certainly went along with that at that point, but I just don't understand how everything gets juggled through after a meeting because of, you know, people had no problem with this that night, so, thank you.
Well, so these are the motions to adopt the report of progress and adopt three motions as, as reported by Vice Chairman Gishia of the Auditor and Clerk Oversight Personnel Subcommittee. So a motion, I need a motion to accept the reports as report of progress and adopt the three motions by Counsel Gishia, second by Consul Mercier. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yim?
No.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Counsel Leahy?
Uh, no.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Seven yeas passes.
Thank you. The next subcommittee report, Youth Services Subcommittee, February 24th. Counsel Robinson?
So we met on February 24th, Youth Services. We had close to about 30, 35 people in attendance that night, a bunch of different organizations. Some of the key points that came up during that subcommittee is the desire and need for information sharing amongst all youth program providers in the city. The Rec Department, City of Lowell's Rec Department was instrumental in, in providing information as far as what's going on in the upcoming months. There'll be plenty of jobs for youths in the community. I believe our Rec Department is going to be looking for up to 220 positions to hire for the summer, including lifeguarding. Representative for Mass Hire was currently also here in the House of the Youth Service Subcommittee. I believe they're looking for up to 250 positions potentially for youth in the city. Lowell, Lowell Youth Leadership Group was in attendance as well, and I believe they're looking for about nine positions of 18-plus for supervisors for two-week camp that's going to be held out at the Greater Lowell Volk Tech. Again, some of the key pieces that surfaced were the need for information sharing to the public, finding a better way, the maintenance routine of some of the playgrounds and fields that our youth organizations are using. And I'm not sure, but we would like to continue these conversations. I don't know, is it possible to file a motion so we could kind of schedule the fourth Thursday of every month to continue these discussions?
So a motion to have the Youth Service Subcommittee every Thursday?
Fourth Thursday of every month.
Motion by Counsel Robinson, second by Consul Yan. On face the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. Madam Manager?
Just clarification, is it the fourth Thursday or every Thursday?
The fourth.
The fourth Thursday.
The fourth Thursday, okay. Thank you.
Any more comment, Counsel Robinson? Are you, are you done?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Our subcommittee also vote on creating a youth, Lowell Youth Subcommittee based on the General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8E. And we would like to present this to the whole council body to vote to adopt this. There are 27 Board and Commission in the City of Lowell. We do not have the Youth Commission, and we talked about, you know, helping young people groom them, teach them to be the leaders of tomorrow, today. So this is to show that we're serious about the young people, their opinion is matter. So that's why we would like the whole council body to adopt the motion to create a Lowell Youth Commission as part of the city body, similar to the 27 Board and Commission that the city has.
Any other comments? Here are none. Need a motion to accept the reports as reports of progress and adopt the motion by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Janess, on face the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. The motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Yan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So if we adopt the, that we, the Lowell create a youth subcommission, how does, how does it work, Madam Solicitor? Maybe you can help to make this a reality as part of the, the city Board and Commission? How does that go about? Thank you.
Through Madam Manager, Madam Solicitor, Madam Manager?
Yeah, I think it would have to go to the Law Department to create. There had been a Mayor's Youth Commission a couple of terms ago, but that's different than, I believe, what you're talking about. So to establish it at a Board or Commission level, the Law Department would have to prepare the appropriate paperwork, including membership rules, et cetera, and then bring it back to the council to endorse, and then it could be posted.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
No other comment, we'll go to the Rules Subcommittee from March 1st. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, we had a productive conversation in this chamber where we went through the rules, top to bottom, and came up with a handful of changes that will need to be made by this body. Most of these reflect the change in composition of our body from nine to 11 members. There was a lot of language within the rules that have to do with five votes for this, seven votes for this, whichever, you know, it's based on that number of nine for a majority. So we went through, found these areas, and we, we took a motion that passed unanimously to work with the Law Department, refer these notes to the Law Department to come up with language, which will come back to this body for us to approve and move forward. Additionally, we had conversations around some housekeeping items that have to do with timing of agenda submissions, labels of, of categories on the agenda, and things like that. So we had another motion that passed unanimously for that, and we'll work with the Law Department to come up with proposed language to update those rules as well. The last motion we entertained was a, a motion to create two new rules in the, in the city council rules to cover remote participation. One rule would be covering the remote participation of department heads and city councilors, and the other rule would be public participation remotely, as we've been doing with Zoom, not necessarily with Zoom going forward, but just having that option open. So those, those rules passed our subcommittee as well, and we will work with the Law Department to create language on those, and they'll come back here. So that's where we stand now, and thank everyone for their time and input at the subcommittee earlier today. Thank you.
If no other comments, need a motion to accept the reports as reports of progress and adopt the motion by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Gishia. On face the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. The motion is carried. We have one more item that was part of moving around. We go, now go to motion 10.13. Counsel Noon requests city manager work with appropriate staff to ensure that all communications from the city intended for public reading be presented in English, Khmer, and Spanish, second by Counsel Mercier.
Registered speakers.
Counsel Noon, you want to register speaker to go first?
Yes.
Suthaya Shimaroom on Zoom?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Chow and council members. My name is Suthaya Shimaroom. I'm not a Lowell resident. I live in the next town. I'm the new executive director of the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, CMAA. I'm here this evening to speak in support of the agenda item 1013 motion that was meant to ensure that all public communication from the city are in English, Khmer, and Spanish. I want to thank Counsel Noon for bringing this important motion forward. CMA has been working with various city departments to provide translation and interpretation in Khmer for many years, and it has been very helpful for our residents and clients. Most of the clients that the CMAA serves do not speak or write English. So I think this, this is a very important motion, and I hope that it will get full support and becomes a reality. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Mary Torres by Zoom?
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Counselor Noon and all others working on this to keep this topic at the forefront as much as we can and to hear ongoing comments on this matter. Thank you. Again, my name is Mary Torres. I live, my address is 85 Royal Street, and I'm speaking on this issue both as a resident and as someone that works with and on behalf of residents in the city. I would like to give some comments from personal experience on challenges in working in community when the city does not have these policies in place, without speaking for anyone, as I encourage all residents to feel comfortable speaking about their lived experience during these and other public meetings, and, and that the city, I just want to add here that the city needs to take seriously publicizing that residents can speak in languages other than English during these meetings and provide interpretation for them if they sign up to do so. Having worked in mental health and social services, family and child welfare, communications, organizing, and civic engagement, I see language access underlying many significant and foundational opportunities for Lowell going forward, for youth and families especially, to feel respected, included, and empowered. The more educated and engaged the public and the more capacity for equitable policy and growth across all sectors. The School Department has had to work through this, and the positive impact of the bilingual family liaisons has been deeply felt across the community, and keeping that going can only support parent and family engagement. Programs like that should be expanded. It's long due that the city develops sufficient policies, and while we can't meet all the needs of all languages, we need to be able to meet those most commonly spoken ones, English, Khmer, Spanish, and I would suggest adding Portuguese where possible, along with closed captioning on LTC from the meetings, and actually considering including ASL in appropriate public meetings. I look forward to hearing what creative solutions the city implements and as well as many other municipal municipalities have had to navigate this. I also look forward to hearing updates about the city's exploration and use of the language line or something similar, as we're familiar with even recent cases of people being turned away from municipal services at the time they're sought because there was not some one on site to take their case in their language. It's important to note that these, there, there are lots of residents having civic and policy-based dialogue in our communities, but they don't get consistent updates in their languages. They may not know how to access or feel comfortable speaking in these meetings, and often the burden falls on younger generations to translate or try to educate themselves and their parents about changes happening in the city while also keeping up with life, not to mention in pandemic years. We can do more collectively to help reduce these burdens, and these, and these policies will help develop confidence that the city is inclusive to all. These issues are sincerely felt by the many community members that I talk with, and solving language access is not just a feel-good issue, but has real tangible and fiscal impacts for our city. It is an investment in our families and neighbors and our collective and social and fiscal resilience. I'm almost done, thank you. If, if the city can take even a little bit more leadership in linguistic access and communications... communications, the neighborhood groups will also be more equipped to develop more capacity and strategies to reach their neighbors better, which will have positive impacts on mental health and social determinants of health, the city would be modeling our shared values more proactively. We've been talking about the city's birthday today, and I want to close with two final thoughts. Much of my work here has been inspired by the multinational history and labor organizing in, in the city and in the region. General assemblies were able to be publicized and interpreted in multiple languages in those days. From my perspective, I have not seen any good reason other than lack of prioritization, given ample technology, human capacity, need, and will among the community, that this should not be developed as common practice in the city, that this should be in print as well as more intentional and human-centric approaches for multilingual engagement in civic life and public meetings. Thank you.
Johanna Danus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, Madam Manager. Hi, my name is Joanna Danus. I'm here on behalf of Coalition for a Better Acre and Lowell Votes as Civic Engagement and Community Organizing Coordinator, and as a resident of Lowell. I live at two eighty-one Boylston Street. I'm speaking in support of motion ten point thirteen. Lowell is proud of our rich history and proud of our diverse communities. However, language access and language equity continues to be a top concern for our community members. The city has a responsibility to connect with every resident within the city. According to the latest census, we know that forty percent of Lowell's residents are Hispanic and Southeast Asian, and there are seventy languages spoken at our high school. It's imperative that all residents have equal access to vital city information. During the height of the pandemic, the city materials providing vital information about testing and vaccines were only provided in English. Those materials were almost inaccessible for almost half of Lowell's residents. If translated materials are provided as an afterthought, by the time that information is disseminated, testing locations may change their hours, change locations, or run out of vaccines, which is unacceptable. Although CBA is a smaller organization, our staff has the capacity to speak with the people we serve in Spanish, Kamai, and we also have a language line as well. The city is serving a larger capacity and should be able to ensure that they at least have the capacity to communicate in Spanish and Kamai. CBA is looking to receive an update on Counselor Mercier's motion ten point two put forth on twelve fourteen if there has been any progress in implementing the language line. In honor of Lowell's birthday, the best way to honor the city and honor our residents is being able to confidently provide a way to communicate with our residents. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your communication.
Counselor Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thanks all the speakers. I first also want to congratulate Sotia Shimaroom, new director for CMAA in West Ham Block. I think all three speakers spoke eloquently about the need to have these three languages translated. It'll be to ensure that the access and communication is important for a lot of these residents, particularly as Johanna indicated, forty percent of Lowell population Hispanic and Asian. So it's, it's important that we do, at least we do. I know that the city have done a very good job, particularly the election department, and particularly during COVID, but we can do better. So that's what I'm, I'm asking. So, thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the motion and all the speakers we've had tonight expressing support for it. I think it's very important that we make our, all the materials coming out of the city as accessible as possible. One idea I had had that I had discussed with the city manager previously is the idea of potentially looking to create a communications department within the city, a centralized communications department, who could take on this work and could be a central point of contact for not just all the employees in the city, but all the residents in the city who are looking to facilitate that communication both in and out of City Hall and all our departments. I realize that's a big ask, and it's going to be a lot of work, but I think it would be worth it in the long run to at least explore this as a possibility. It's probably something we'll have to discuss with the next administration, but I, I think it's an important, an important goal, and would, would serve to really be much more inclusive for our, our city going forward. So thank you again to everyone for speaking up on this. I do think it's an important issue.
That's a good suggestions, and it's a good motion, Counselor Nguyen, language is important, how we communicate, how we engage with one another, how to act, how to understand each other, and, and the situation. Here are no other comments. On the face of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. That was the last item for the motion that got moved out of order. To pick it up, we'll continue where we left off with the last one, I believe that was six point three. Six point three, communication appointment of Judith Davidson to Library Board of Trustees, motion to adopt by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Any comments? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Ms. Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gishia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Sounds great. We, we have fifteen minutes to finish the rest of the agenda. Seven votes from the city manager, seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, I believe those are votes. I, I can't read hand signal.
Motion to bundles, are we looking for? Motion to bundle.
So if, I was going to say, even if we can bundle these motions, everyone's welcome to make comments on it, but I need a motion to bundle these votes and to waive second reading.
So moved.
There's only two votes left, right?
Yes, one, two, three, four, seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Gishia. I'm going to read each one. Seven point one, vote from the city manager, seven point one, vote, Mayor Mac Street, three thirty-five CPC funding recommendation. Seven point two, vote, Vondham Avenue, fourteen thirteen, fourteen fifteen CPC funding recommendation. Seven point three, vote, authorize city manager accept, expend mass elder affairs formula funding. Seven point four, vote, accept, expend forty thousand, Mass Department of Mental Health grant, three, one, twenty-two. Motion to adopt by Counselor Scott, second by Counselor Leahy. If no other comments or questions, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Ms. Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gishia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Eleven years.
That's great. So now we can skip to nine petition. Nine point one, claims there are nineteen property damage. Motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Rourke. On favor, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. Nine point two, miscellaneous, Maria Karat Supalos, request removal of handicap sign from in front of House at sixty-three Mount Vernon Street. Motion to refer to transportation engineer for report and recommendation by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. On favor, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. Nine point three, National Grid, request installation of four-inch gas main from one fourteen South Whipple to Sydney Street. Motion to refer to public hearing on March fifteen, twenty twenty-two at seven P M by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Leahy. On favor, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Okay, we're doing pretty good. We have eleven minutes to finish the city council motions. Ten point one, Counselor Mercier, request city manager have proper department report revenues derived from meals tax to the, to the city, specifically in business such as Popeyes Chicken at Drum Hill, second by Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd almost like to amend my motion and add as well the four hundred units of housing that's being built on the Middlesex Training School. I, I, they'd be tying in to the sewer lines. I'd like to, I'm curious about that as well. So if I could amend it to add, and I'll explain a little bit more, just to get a second on it.
Request to amend, second by Counselor Nguyen, approved.
Yes, thank you. With this motion, I am just curious about the meals tax and what is being generated through this tax. I'm sure that restaurants are paying their fair share, I'm not denying that, but I'm also curious about a particular restaurant, Popeyes. It's in Drum Hill, where I realized that the kitchen and the dining area are in Chemsford. However, the drive-through is in Lowell, and because of COVID, the restaurant was closed for two years, and it wasn't open to walk-in customers. The drive-through service was the only means of serving the public for them. I know that the drive-through portion of the restaurant is in Lowell because the license for the drive-through comes from Lowell, they pull a permit for that. So I would just be curious, it's just a means of getting our fair share, that's all I'm looking for. Maybe they're paying it, I don't know, but I don't, you won't know the answer till you ask. And I'm also concerned about the four hundred units of housing that are supposedly to be built at the old Middlesex Training School and, let's see, gosh, and the training center on Princeton Boulevard. I'd like to get a report on the sewer tie-ins and how will Lowell benefit financial-wise on the, on this happening. That's all I want to know. How are we knowing about it? I don't think that they have any access unless they tie into the Lowell lines. It's a means of the city getting our fair share, and if they are, fine, I just want to rest my mind assure that this is happening. Thank you.
Here are no other comments, on the face of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. Motion ten point two, Counselor Mercier, request city manager prepare a report that will give an update on the progress and strategies of the monthly meetings between the city and the school finance department, second by Counselor Rourke, Counselor Mercier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, there were some concerns about proper procedures concerning finances between the school and the city finances, and I thought at the time, but I forgot to mention the fact that we do anticipate bad bills from time to time, almost yearly, we do get that, and it occurred to me that a motion was made during the last sitting council where Counselor Dave Conway made a motion to get an update monthly. I'm sure some of my colleagues remember that, so as to avoid this from not happening. Maybe it's a given that it does, I don't know, but I thought this was a good motion. The motion passed on the council floor, and I bring this up again as to inquire if monthly meetings are taking place. This motion is not brought forward to create a focus blame on any party, but as a means of being efficient, and on top of things, we have new employees that are sometimes unfamiliar with the proper procedure, and this motion is a way to be informative with each other and work as a team. So this motion is to reassure us that monthly meetings between the city and the school finance departments are still on track and operational so that no surprises spring up, such as some employees who are complaining that they have not had their paychecks. I don't know anything about that, but that's what I'm hearing. So the motion that I bring forward is a form of preventative maintenance. Thank you.
Here are no other comments, on the face of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry. Motion ten point three, Counselor Yem, request city manager create a pothole hotline, second by Counselor Janess. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the city do have Civic Plus on the city website, and encourage people to, to utilize to report the pothole. However, oftentimes, people have difficulty, even including myself, login, creating an account in order to report, and some people were complaining that too difficult. And then I understand from the report on the pothole rapid response, the report says something about email and phone. However, the email, who do we email to, and people ask the question, and the phone, which phone number that we are using. So therefore, I would like to ask the manager, please create a, you know, a pothole hotline, so this line, you know, that people will remember and the city would advertise it right on the, on the, on the city website and in other printed material as well. Thank you, Mr. Man, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing other hands, or in favor, say no, the eyes have it, the motion is carry.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I dropped. Yeah, you know, we just had this discussion an hour ago. I think that the lead time is, what, one or two days till they get fixed, Madam Manager?
It is. I, I just want to point out, people can call and do call DPW, they can call the manager's office, but DPW, they can call twenty-four hours because the night watchman does answer the phone. So I think it's a matter of making sure everybody knows what numbers they can call, but we, you know, that, that, they, they can email, as you point out, Counselor, but they can make calls directly to DPW, that number can be out there directly to, to the manager's office, and, and we keep track of every single call.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just point out that there is, sometimes do use a three-one-one service for phone calls that goes direct to like customer service, DPW type.
We, we don't have three-one-one service. We did look into that a few years ago, and it was pretty costly to establish, and so we don't have three-one, we have the Civic Plus.
So they have looked at it in the past.
Yeah, we, but, but we can certainly make those numbers widely known on the website and, and make sure everybody knows the numbers they can call for the potholes.
Okay. The, the motion is passing, Counselor Yem, even though we discussed it earlier, maybe you can get information put on your website to let I know many of your constituents are concerned about it, so you can provide more information through, through your website and your social media.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to just be sure that, that phone number is, you know, is easily available and accessed because, you know, people ask, what phone number do I call? So I can look it up for, they can see it right there, so, and then publicize it and make it well-known to the public. So here's the phone number you can call for the pothole. I receive the text, I receive the call because people having difficulty who to call, so they call me, and I said, no problem. So I give them the phone number for the DPW, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ten point four, Counselor Gishia, request city auditor provide the city council with the current policy for wire transfers, for paying invoices, second by Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Gishia.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. This came up because the surrounding community had a problem with an invoice that, that got wire transferred out, and, and I just, I, I don't really need a report, I just wanted to bring it up and, and ask if, do we actually pay invoices by wire transfer, and if we do just, are there security measures in place that would prevent what happened to them? Because it wasn't, it was an employee within the office that actually did that wire transfer.
Yes, through you to Counselor Gishia. The city does pay certain invoices via wire transfer, but it's all, it's a select few. It's reserved for, you know, big payments like health insurance, bond payments, dental insurance, and then just certain, the very few vendors, even during COVID, we never changed that policy. So Treasury staff does, is the only department with access to the bank, and they make the wire transfers. So I think what happened in Tewksbury is they were like victim to a business email scam where somebody was impersonating a, a town vendor and was successful in having the payment instructions changed, you know, whether it was through a department that went through Treasury. So here at the city, I mean, we would not change any wiring instructions just by email. That would be verified with a phone call to, you know, so, whether it's through the department to, who, you know, the known vendor. We would never just change any instructions by an email, even if it looked realistic. And this, you know, all city staff goes through, like cybersecurity training through the MIS department that reminds us of these policies and- that reminds us of these policies and procedures constantly. So we did review again, you know, knowing what happened with Tewksbury, with Treasury staff, with auditing staff, and, you know, we'll hopefully stay on top of it, and we would never just change something, you know, from, from an email.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Connor. Connor, have you seen the policies that are in place for wire transfers also?
Mr. Baldwin.
I'm, I'm sorry, do you mean here in the city or elsewhere?
For our city.
We do have an accounts payable policy. I don't know off the top of my head whether why.
No, I just wonder if you're comfortable with the whole, if everyone's comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. I just want to make sure that, you know, we looked at the policies, that's all, and, and made sure we're all comfortable with it. Okay, thank you.
Here are no other comments on favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. Motion 10.5, Counselor Gitcher, request city manager outline the upcoming plans for spring fields to be ready for sports. That's very specific. Motion speak for itself.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. This came out of the.
Second by Counselor Janess.
I'm sorry. This came out of the youth subcommittee meeting, and it's a concern of all of the, that the baseball people that the fields won't be ready, and one, it actually said that they put down new sod over at one of the fields and never raised the sprinkler heads at the time they put the sod down. So I just wondered if all these fields just will, if you can look into making sure that all these fields are in place. Thank you.
Here are no other comments on favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. Motion 10.6, Counsel Robinson, request city manager update the council on the current cross connect, the current cross connection backflow survey underway. Second by Counselor Nune, Counsel Robinson.
Yeah, this came to me by means of a couple residents in the city. There's changes going on, and I'd just like a full update from Water Department, if possible, in regards to this. Thank you.
Here are no other comments on favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. Motion 10.7, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have the proper department take a look at the current overhead traffic light situation at the intersection of Andover and High Street. Second by Counselor Mosia, Counsel Robinson.
It was brought forward by a constituent again, heading up the left-hand turn onto High Street. There's no overhead light, and they were commenting, maybe that'd be a good place to take a peek at and see if there'd be improvements. Thank you.
On favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. The motion is carry. Motion 10.8, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have the proper department look at Mount Pleasant Street as it is beginning to be used as a high-speed cut-through for afternoon commuters. Second by Counselor Janess, Counsel Robinson.
Pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
All in favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. Motion 10.9, Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide council with an update from Coordinated Outreach and Engagement Team, COET, on homeless crisis. Second by Counselor Yem, Counsel Robinson.
I'd like the council to be updated as far as what are the efforts that they, that's been ongoing with this group? And what are they looking to do in the near and long-term future? Thank you.
All in favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. The motion is carry. Motion 10.10, Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide a report on total number of reported weather-related accidents on Saturday, February 19, 2022, from 12, from 2:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Second by Counselor Mosia, Counsel Robinson.
That was a tough one for the city, a lot of accidents, I'd imagine, and I'd just look for an update. Thank you.
All in favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. The motion is carry. 10.11, Counselor Nune, request city manager provide report on status of Smith Baker Building and any potential future owner or occupant, and what happens without that potential. Second by Counselor Yem, Counselor Nune.
The motion speak for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor say aye.
Quick question for Mr. Mayor over here.
Counselor Rook.
Yeah, it's a quick question to the manager. So the Smith Baker, is that covered on historical restrictions? Are there any historical restrictions involved?
Yes, yeah.
Which probably makes it harder to do anything over there.
Yeah, very, very difficult.
So what's the process of, of taking out of the historical, you know?
It's in the, it's in the district, so, you know, we, we don't have the ability of taking it out of historic. We've tried in the past to put it out to bid several times, even, even to the point of putting it out to bid for no money. And, and it's just been very difficult to, to get.
So doesn't, you buy it for a dollar, right? And, but there are some restrictions that are.
Right, and that a dollar on the condition, you know, something along the line, a dollar on the condition that you improve, you know, restore the building and so forth. That was a possibility, we'll get you the report, but then ultimately the organization decided to walk away.
CBA had it, and they had hundreds of thousands of dollars, right?
CBA had it a couple of times, and it was a situation that they weren't able to secure funding. And so it's, it's, it's really a very difficult, you know, catch-22. I mean, it's something that the city may want to look into doing some of the work there to get it ready for development. The problem is, you know, all the other needs, you know, in, in the city. We, we did, you know, we, we did recently contract to clean out Smith Baker so that it's not in a danger for, you know, firefighters or anybody that would have to go into the building. But it, it remains a, a real challenge.
So in the report, when we get back from the council, you know, could you, you know, I guess for, and it explained, you know, I understand the historical board has their positives, but they also carry a lot of negatives as well. Especially if you're trying to do something like this, you know, maybe tend to have a real conversation about the historical word altogether, you know, and the city going forward. Especially when you talk about, you know, improving the downtown and making it more accessible, making it more user-friendly. So if you add something like that in there as well, what's holding us back from a organization or a private, you know, entrepreneur purchasing it? And, you know, it may lead to a bigger conversation about something that should be started. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Just a quick question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, what would be the requirement if there is a private investor would like to purchase the, the property? What, what would be the requirement the city would impose on it? Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Well, I mean, that would be up to the city. The city could design an RFP with, you know, requested, what, what the preferred purpose and, and see what comes in. We've done that a couple of times, as I've said, and we've gotten very little participation back. It doesn't, that's not to say that maybe today we put together another RFP and see, test the appetite as to whether there's a developer who may want to propose something a bit different, maybe make it a little more broad. You know, we, we could certainly do that. It's just the condition of the building, the historical restrictions, there's just so many things. You know, there's no parking at the building, so there's just a lot of challenges with the property. As beautiful as it is, and as beautiful as, you know, the theater or the, you know, auditorium portion is, it's just really not conducive to development and, and the cost. It just kind of gets mixed. But we can, we can continue to go back to the drawing board.
I, I would like to encourage the city to try the RFP one more time because the real estate market is really hot. So we may have investors out there that willing to, to do with the broader, you know, description not too much, too restricted. You know, as long as they can comply with the historical preservation, I mean, that's, that should be enough. And the usage also could be part of the RFP as well. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Counselor Rook.
Last time, Mr. Mayor. When the reporters come back, Madam Manager, I mean, this has been through RFP probably more than any other project or building or, you know, funding source in the city's history, right? And what you stated before, the restrictions are not going to change unless those restrictions change. You know, again, a nonprofit company, a very successful one, has done great work in the city, had it. They had, I think, seven, $800,000 as well to go on with it, and zero could be done with it. So, you know, I don't want to run through a quicksand here, but I think the council should be aware of what's going on with the thing over the past two decades, and then go from there. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, all in favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry.
Mr. Mayor, may I just kind of like suspend the rules and ask the city manager a question about the lights in the city? Could I do that?
Counselor Mosia, request a suspended rule. Second by Counsel Leahy. Motion is approved.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Last night, I was going by the Bridge Street Bridge, the John Cox Bridge, and I looked at the lights there, and they were purple and red and blue. And I thought to myself, gee, wouldn't it be nice if they were blue and yellow in support of the Ukrainian people? So today, I talked to someone in the city, and they said, talk to the city manager because we, we did have the same idea, and they changed it. Do you know about that?
Yes, the, the Community Foundation who, who kind of manages that, the bridge projects, did send out an email today that the lights will be blue and, and yellow or gold in solidarity with the Ukraine.
Thank you very much. Having said that, over at Lucy Larkin Park, the waterway by the bridge over here, we could do the same thing there. I know today, when we had the opening of the Gormley's, the ribbon cutting, she had a picture on the wall of that very same area with the lights red, white, and blue. And I thought, what about blue and, and yellow? Similar to what the colors that the mayor is wearing this evening, blue and yellow. So I thought we could do that. And if we knew, I know some people know Congress, President Marty Mian, if we could get the lights changed over there at the university as you go by the highway, that would be in support of the Ukraine. I think that would be a good gesture. Thank you.
And Peter Crowe from CASE is working on the Lucy Larkin Park component.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Nune.
I just want to add what Counselor Mosia suggests, I think is well thought of and very passionate way for Lowell showing, showing support by lighting up the bridge with the Ukrainian, Ukrainian color. Not just, you know, like Counselor Mosia indicated, you know, Cock Bridge and other bridges as well. That'd be the best way for Lowell showing solidarity with the Ukrainian people. Thank you, Counselor Mosia.
Thank you.
No other comment. We'll go to the last motion that we'll discuss in this chamber tonight. Motion 10.12, Counselor Nune and Counselor Janess, request city manager have appropriate department present rapid recovery plan and convene a stakeholder meeting to discuss implementation with an emphasis on incentivizing downtown building owners to renovate and lease upper floors as residential units. Counselor Nune or Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that the directors for DPD, Christine McCall, have done some work already, and that's why I want to see if she can present, to give a presentation and, and also convene a stakeholder on this because Lowell is one of the community that participated in a rapid recovery planning program. Look at the impact that COVID has had on the downtown and downtown businesses and others. That's just one priority that Lowell is working on, has been working on for some time. And Directors McCall has been a part of that. And so this is fitting in terms of not only looking at that, but also helping the business in downtown. So I just want to, that's why I filed it, and, and, and so that the council here of, from her, they give us a presentation on where we at on it. I think it's almost complete, so that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Rook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another reason I blew up the historical board, Madam Manager. Thank you.
No other comments on favor say aye opposed say no. The eyes have it. Motion is carry. We already have taken motion 10.13. Now we go to 11, City Council Executive Session. So what we do is, you know, we'll, we'll take a vote, a roll call to go into executive session, and we will adjourn the regular meeting from the executive session. Before we do that, before we go into executive session, are there any announcements? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to announce that Planning and Development in the city has established now round three of COVID-19 Small Business Relief Fund that opened today, providing for up to $10,000 in grant funds to support qualified eligible Lowell restaurants and other food businesses that have been negatively impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. The funds will be available to reimburse for working capital expenses, including, but not limited to, rent or mortgage payments, payroll expenses, utility, and business-related fees. So if people, you know someone who has a business or you have a business that would qualify, you can learn more about it by going to our website, www.lolma.gov/1407/covid19/businessresources. These guidelines are in English, Camar, Spanish, and Portuguese. So I want to make sure everybody knows that. They're in multiple languages. There's also the additional consideration that minority-owned restaurants and food businesses will be given preference, as well as applicants that haven't applied before or secured support funding through other local, state, or federal agencies. So it's, it's, again, an effort to try and help small businesses and especially restaurants that have been hard hit.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Under announcement, I'd just like to announce.
Oh, I have a question.
Oops, sorry.
I have a question.
I had, I seen, go ahead, Counselor Mosia.
Oh, I have a question. He's on another issue. Would this apply to the same restaurants, or are the, they have to be different from not having any help?
I think the preference, Christine McCall is here to answer. I believe the preference is if they, if they hadn't received it before, they would get preference. Christine?
That's correct. So if, if a, if a restaurant has received funding from us, the state or federal, they are still eligible, but we're going to prioritize businesses who haven't received any funding.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. That was my question.
Any other comments regarding this announcement? Counsel Robinson?
I just wanted to mention, I guess there's a collaboration for artists in the community between Beyond Walls Project Learn and the city of Lowell, and they're looking for artists. Art Up Lowell Mass is, is the name of the project. And for more information, it's art, you can email art@beyondwalls.org. That's art@beyondwalls.org. For any artists interested in murals and working with Beyond Walls and Project Learn. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
I'd like to invite my colleague, Counselor, to the tour of the acre that will be happening tomorrow. Starting at 2:30, we'll meet here with the student from Harvard Graduate School of Design. They do urban planning along with the city, so they would, acre is one of the, the project they are doing. So we would give them the tour, and Dick Howe will be part of the tour along other, other stakeholders in, in the acre. So anyone want to walk the, get to know the acre? Tomorrow, we meet here at the city hall at 2:30. Thank you.
Here are no other announcement. We, 11.1, we need a motion to go to executive session regarding litigation update, public discussion of which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to ask that we adjourn from executive session as well?
What, what, right. I made the announcement before. We're going to notice from the executive session. Second by Counsel Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gitcher.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mosia.
Yes.
Counselor Nune.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
11 years.
Again, we will not be returning to this chamber. We'll adjourn from the executive session. And we'll take a five-minute break. We didn't do too bad. Only 19 minutes after nine.
I had one earlier. I need some sugar. Me too. I didn't have one.